Okay, we'll call the November 30th Planning Commission meeting order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained motion for the roll call, please.
Mrs. Moritz.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Valeri.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mrs. Semperman.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Now entertained motion for the pool of the minutes of the November 9th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have two items that are going to be remain on, one of them's going to remain on the table this evening, and the other will be tabled. So it's item three under all business was tabled at the previous meeting, will remain on the table tonight, and number five?
That's correct.
Okay, which was, which will be tabled tonight because we're not ready to move forward with that item, so. We have one public hearing this evening, a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant at 8500 Station Street. It's a coffee shop. Is that applicant here? Okay, would you come forward, sir, and identify yourself for the clerk? And the format, up to the podium up here. The format we follow for the public hearings is allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do. Then those wishing to speak in favor are given an opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against, or if they just have questions, are afforded a similar opportunity. So with that in mind, go ahead and identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name is William Catania. I'm looking to, you need my home address, or?
Yes, your home address.
It's 8994 Elm Street, Kirtland, Ohio.
Okay, and what do you want to do at that location?
Well, that's where I live.
I know, but I mean, the location for the item on the agenda this evening?
Coffee shop.
Coffee shop.
There's no food preparation that's going to be done in there. It's all coffee, tea, hot chocolate, and pastry, but it's going to be individually wrapped and brought in by local bakers.
So it'll be prepared off-site and then?
Approved by the state.
Okay. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against or questions? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, we just had two conditions. One, that they get, address the comments of the city engineer and either get a reoccupancy permit or an interior building permit. And that they don't, any of the carryout patrons not park in front of the building along Station Street.
Station Street. So you've seen the two conditions?
I see that, yeah. But I don't believe we're going to, it's basically for the building.
Right, but as we well know, people will stop and buy coffee, so.
I hope so.
I know you do. So commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration? Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Catania. I visited the site yesterday, Wednesday, and I parked on Station Street. I didn't see any signs telling me I shouldn't park there, so I went.
In front there?
Yeah, right in front.
I know, there's no signs there.
I know, so my question is, is I went into the building and wanted to see where your coffee shop was in relation to the other businesses. And I walked in there and it was open, but there was no one in it. Are you open yet?
I would like to, pay rent.
Okay. Well, I saw the door that you're referring to, that empties out to the westing, the western lot. And I agree with your, you know, that's probably the best way to get in and get out. It's a direct shot that takes you right to the coffee shop.
I'm going to have to develop something for that, if I'm going to do that, direct them to that point.
That was my comment. Maybe early on, until they become acclimated, you think some signage maybe on Station Street, directing the patrons for the coffee shop to go to the western lot? And then that door, maybe something by the door so they know that's where to go into. Just a suggestion.
That would be the best way to go.
Mr. Spence, the parking on Station Street's come up a couple of times. Maybe you could take to the traffic working group the fact that that should be posted out there if the police department doesn't want people parking along that area.
I believe they don't want anyone parking along that Station Street.
Right.
Outside.
Another issue I see is when I was leaving, they're parking on Maple Street, right next to the building, starting at the stop sign, going all the way to the end of the building. So if you're going to head down Station Street east and you want to make a right, you've got to really be careful because those cars coming down north, you can hit them because you have to go around those parked cars.
Mr. Spence, maybe you could also alert them to that, the traffic working group?
Actually, that front area is supposed to be for the drop-off of material, you know, products and stuff.
Anything else, Mrs. Sedoti?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve with two conditions?
Second.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Minor subdivision under all business.
Approved.
Minor subdivision of one industrial lot to create two industrial lots. Is that applicant here? Okay, if you come forward, sir, and I'll entertain a motion to take it off the table.
Motion to remove from the table?
Second.
Jess?
Mrs. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Go right ahead.
Steven Roth, Dorking Bernstein.
I'm Katie Kalbacher from Myers Roman. We also have our surveyor from McSteam here with us as well.
Got the whole compliment tonight, huh?
Yes.
Lot of billable hours going on there, right? So what we want to do, what you want to do is you want to take one lot, divide it into two lots. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, the reason, the minimum width requirement is 150 feet in the M1 light manufacturing district.
And Lot B does not conform, is that what you said?
Does not conform, but the planning commission and city council has the authority to approve lots with less width or less area. In this case, less width. And I noticed on the street there are five sublots ranging from 104 to 111 feet.
And you're going to do a cross easement across the both pieces of property, is that right?
Yes, we have a reciprocal easement, access easement already executed and ready to go. We would file with the deeds of the lots.
Okay, and do you want to copy that?
Oh, yeah.
We already got a copy.
Okay, you already got the copy?
Right. What they, the city engineer is requesting is also that they give us, they check out utilities and that we get, that was one of the conditions, that they give us those utility easements. If, you know, if the storm drains are connected, that those easements are in place, too.
You can do that.
Yeah, we can do that. I believe that they're already in place, but if we look into it further, and if they're not for some reason, then we can broaden the reciprocal access easement to incorporate that as well.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for the administration. So even though this, the one parcel does not meet the required width, all of the setbacks and the parking meet the requirements. That's correct? I think that was according to? I think, correct. According to our notes. Right, the building setbacks. Okay, thank you. Motion to approve with one condition?
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, you're good. You'll check that information and get it to the administration on the cross easements from the engineer?
Yeah, we'll get them.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you.
Item three was tabled at the previous meeting, will remain on the table tonight. Under new business, item four, miscellaneous review of amendment to a conditional use permit at 9355 Pioneer. Is that applicant here? I guess not, so I'll entertain a motion to table that item.
Motion to table?
Yeah, he, is Pete here? Yes, he isn't here.
Entertained a motion to table.
Motion to table item four?
Second.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Item five is going to be tabled, is that correct?
That is correct.
Entertained a motion to table item five.
Motion to table?
Second.
Jess?
Mrs. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, item six, final site plan, now you're on. Final site plan and architectural review of a commercial building at 9490 Diamond Center. Taco Bell, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. If you identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name's Ellen Selly, I'm with GPD Group. Do you need my address, too?
Yes.
520 South Main Street, Suite 2531, Akron, Ohio. I know this project has been here several times, so I'm sure you guys are pretty familiar with the site plan by now. We did receive a few comments that I just wanted to address, so you guys know that we did take a look at them.
Okay, go right ahead.
So the first one was the building comment about the no-build zone. And the original, when I was basically filling out this information, we talked more to our senior architect and we have came up with some other solutions because, as was noted in here, the, basically the top part of the adjacent building has additional architectural features that are not fire, don't have fire suppression on them. So we have actually moved the building forward an additional five feet on our end, and that way we meet the distance between buildings. So it is over 20 feet. And I did submit a new site plan, I believe it was yesterday, I don't know if you guys received that or not.
I didn't.
No.
Okay. All it does is move the building forward by feet. I do have one copy, if that's something.
If you can just throw it us.
So it really, it doesn't look much different. The only difference is this bump out here, it is now been pushed forward, so that bump out is in line with the adjacent building, right there. And so now it has reached that 20-foot necessary separation. And then in addition to that, we'll be putting a 10-foot easement on the Taco Bell property. That is a no-build easement. And this will restrict any kind of buildings being, any kind of structures being put on Taco Bell's property that would interfere with the 10 feet that is required adjacent to the neighboring shopping center.
Okay, Mr. Spence, you're fine with that?
The building department would have to be fine with that, I'm sure that.
Okay, but you're fine with it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
No, it's fine. The next comment was about cross-access easements, and that's with stormwater and with right-of-entry. And we have those handled in Exhibit B for Taco Bell's purchase agreement, but that's not final yet, so we're not sharing those right now. But once they are final, we will submit those to the city, probably with the building department supplemental, since the easement for the 10-foot no-build zone will be in there as well. The next item was about increasing this land, or this island here, to be a landscape island. And we can do that, we would just lose an additional two parking spaces on this shopping center property. So if that's something you guys would like, we just wanted you to know what that change is, and it would be a loss of two parking stalls.
Okay, Mr. Spence, any comments there?
Overparked.
Okay, so we're good, we're good.
Okay. So we will make that change. The next one, again, was about cross-access easements, that's going to be in Exhibit B. And then also was noted, the traffic control devices would be needed on-site. And we have added a note, the GCs for Taco Bell typically handle that, so we will note that they need to follow all maintenance of traffic, and they will put together a plan for that.
Now, do you have samples of the building material?
I do, I submitted samples. I don't know if you guys got to see those at all.
Can you put it on the screen, or?
So most of the building is going to be this nichihua here, and it is a fiber cement board, and it's obviously meant to look like brick. And part of the building will not be painted, it will just be this, and it gives off a similar look to what is adjacent at that shopping center.
Can I interrupt you there real quick? How come you're not using real brick?
Nichihua is a material that Taco Bell is using all over for their brand, so we're just trying to incorporate more of the brand materials in this.
The reason I ask the question is, a lot of the surrounding buildings are brick. And it seems to me, this is going to be a very prominent place on that site, and it seems to me that it should be brick also.
It gives off the impression of brick, you really can't tell unless you're up there and you see the joints between the panels. It really looks good.
Of course, of course it does, or you wouldn't be using it. But I think, and I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I think it's, we need to have some real brick on the building.
So I guess the question is, do you want a full replacement of the nichihua to be brick? Or do you think that part of it can be the nichihua and part of it can be?
I'd like to see a full replacement, but that's, that's me, I don't know. Commission members, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman?
I agree with you, and I'm not sure that doing part real brick and part fake brick would look really very good together, so I think that would be too obvious. You have the two of them next to each other.
I did bring the brick samples that we use now. We will obviously be using a full brick, not a thin brick. The thin brick doesn't go on nicely, so we'll, it would be a full brick. And these are the two colors. This is a pewter, and that's the main color. And this is almond, and that's the accent color on the building. So everywhere that it was this red color on your printouts, it will now be this gray. And everywhere that, I think it was a gray, will be the pewter.
So we're going to use real brick?
It would be real brick in these colors, then.
Gotcha.
If that's what you guys would prefer.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Why can't we have real brick in the red color or the brown color to match the adjacent building?
I would have to see what, what color exactly the adjacent building is. These are, again, the Taco Bell brand colors that go with our building, that go with the other paint. It just matches the overall look and expression that Taco Bell wants to give off. To have it be red, I don't know if we can match the exact brick that's out there adjacent. And I would have to see what, what is available. We have to, it would be a lot of sampling to try to figure out what, what would match. And we also have, our building is set up for two-tone. So if we would do all brick on one, what would be the accent color?
Well, I'm a little confused because you said you were going to, you could use this, what are you calling it? Nichihua?
Nichihua.
Reddish.
And you said that that was a brand for Taco Bell, but now you're saying that this is the brand color. So I'm a little confused.
So we have done before with, with this, they call it whitewash, which is, sounds like a silly name because some of it's red, but they're okay with this and then painting the accent color to be a Taco Bell brand color. If it was all brick, these are the brand colors that they would go with.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you finished, Mrs. Semperman?
Yeah.
For the moment?
For the moment, yeah, I'm lost right now.
Mr. Varga?
I think some of the reaction to the concern about brick color is that there's a half a dozen buildings in the immediate proximity of this. And though they're not all the same color, they're all reddish brick colors, including the building that sits right next to you.
Okay.
So I guess, I think the sensitivity that's coming out of the commission is that, why couldn't this building fit more into the environment that it's in? There's a brick building, a red brick building behind it, next to it, across the street.
Is that McDonald's, is that red brick?
I'm not, I don't remember McDonald's.
I think that's McDonald's color, and that's.
But I know that the Taco, I'm not, the Burger King has brick, red brick on it.
That one has red brick?
I'm almost positive, I think it does, yeah. I think it does, yeah. Well, my, so my point is not, I understand your standard palette of colors. And the, you know, elevation looks good when it's sitting there without any other context to it. But when you think about all the other buildings that are around it, could, could we think about a palette of colors with the proper accent colors, but that would fit more into the red brick environment that it's in?
I would have to check back with the brand on that. Some other features to keep in mind are, we do have an ephes band along the top, and that ephes band is painted gray. It is the cityscape. We also have this clematis color, and this is painted behind the slat walls.
Oh, behind the slat walls, that's why I couldn't see where it was at.
So it's not as prominent, but, but it is an accent color. And then we also have these metal towers that are, they're called Corten metal towers, and they give off like a weathered look, is really what it is.
Well, that's actually steel.
Yes.
Panels, not, not wood.
No, you know, they're not painted either. This, I tried to give you the appearance, but it, when it comes, it comes in like this shiny silver. And then before we put it up, we keep it out on-site.
It rests, yeah.
And so you can't really tell on this, but it, it does get to, this color's pretty accurate.
So I guess to summary, my point is that could you look at, you know, with the two brick materials, two brick areas, to be in the reddish environment?
I would have to talk to Taco Bell, but it would be a two-tone, because that's the way that.
That's fine, I mean, I, I'm not saying, and I'm not saying you have to match exactly the building next door, but just to put it in the environment where all these other buildings have kind of gone to the red, and your building is going to be completely different. And that's the reason you come in front of a design review?
If, is that something that would be a condition? Or is that something I would have to return back to the board to approve the colors?
I think we're going to need to see the colors.
I think, yeah, I think that's going to become an addition to at least have a presentation of a, of a red brick scheme that would have two colors of red, you know, that would be, you know, compatible with the, with the brick environment that the building is going in.
Just to confirm, that's not something that could be administrative approval? It would have to come back? Okay.
I think it would have, you'd have to come back.
Yeah, I think we'd have to see it.
I will see what we can do, and I will come back to you guys on that one.
Okay. Anything else you want to discuss?
I think all the other comments, it was just in, stuff's going to be in Exhibit B. We'll do an irrigation design once the final site plan is approved. And I believe we resubmitted a new photometric plan that meets those requirements, but I will check if there's something that's missing from there.
Okay. Mr. Spence, you indicated earlier you have not seen the revised plan on the site plan that she alluded to earlier?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Okay, so, did you drop that off at City Hall?
I thought I emailed it to you, Jessica.
And I do believe I forwarded that to Mr. Rastatter, so.
But we don't take the information the night of the meeting or the day before the meeting because the packets, we received the packets last week, so we're relying on what's information is in those packets.
I understand.
So.
It, it was a change that came out afterwards from when we submitted.
I understand, I understand.
Because it was something we had to work through. Also, we got the comment on it, so that's something we worked through with that comment, too.
So if we table the architectural comments tonight, you can be back in three weeks with some revision to the brick?
Can we still vote on the rest of the site plan and?
Well, I think, I think we can, can't we?
Yeah, I would think.
Mr. Zeman, we can, right?
Of course.
Okay, so we can do the site plan, we just won't do the architectural treatment?
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Spence, any additional comments from the administration?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioners, questions regarding the site plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman?
The administration had made some comments about additional low-growing plants in the exit drives and such, and you didn't allude to having read that. Is that something you're going to be able to do?
Yeah, we can do that as well.
Okay. And would you be okay if we made the, there's six conditions, if we make a seventh condition, which was, you had mentioned, making the 2.2-foot striped area into a nine-foot landscape island?
Yes, I thought that those comments were referenced, but within the city engineers, I think number one condition handles that. Under, because engineering comments were the first thing, and then the first comment is, basically I have to address them in writing. It'll be the same items that I mentioned tonight.
I don't see that in the engineers' comments.
Under civil site?
Yeah, I don't see anything about the striped area needing to be a landscape island.
It's the second part of that comment, so it's on the next page?
I see right-of-entry easement from adjacent properties, and then I see turning radius may need improved. Oh, it's in the next sentence, where?
Modification.
Right, okay, thank you. So yes, all right, then we'll make it six conditions.
Okay, is that a motion?
So that number two condition, does that need to change then? Because it says the approved building material is nichihua.
Yes.
We'll delete that.
We'll delete that. Because all we're dealing with now is the site plan.
Right.
Not the architectural treatment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I know we're talking about the conditions, I just had one question about the site plan.
Go right ahead.
At the entrance, which is the western, most western driveway, and at the exit, which is the more easter, easterly driveway, and I tried to look quickly, but I couldn't quite find it, so I just want some confirmation. Is there signage that clearly identifies entrance only and exit only?
There should be, yes. My engineer put that on there.
I was trying to find it, but I couldn't. And will there be, and I think this is, this could become a condition, a sign on the other side of the street that says no left turn, coming from the east?
Generally, that's put up, yes.
And they would be responsible for that, or the city would be responsible for?
They'd be responsible.
So we need to add that?
So we'd want to add that, too, to make sure no one tries to turn directly in from, you know, turning, turning left, going west from, coming from the east into either of these two driveways. Let me ask one other question because it came up in the bigger, in the previous review. If you're approaching this restaurant from the east, in order to get into the parking lot, you have to turn back at the traffic light at the other end of the shopping center and then work your way through. Is there going to be some signage there that, that identifies that is the entrance to the Taco Bell from the east?
Right now, we don't have any signage there.
Well, I would suggest that some signage be put there because if people drive by that, they can't get into your restaurant, and then they're going to make an illegal left-hand turn.
Do you think that's something that would be learned over time, and it would just need to be temporary, or?
People don't learn, people avoid. So I, I'm.
Yeah, we don't really, the sign code may or may not address that issue. Generally, we don't, you know, have an additional directional sign that would be permitted for, for this type of plaza, but if they could co-locate, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, you.
But signage is something that.
I'm not trying to dictate it, but I'm, I'm trying to, it, it becomes a problem with people coming from the east because when they pull up to the restaurant location, they can't turn in.
The, the, anyone coming from the east is a residence of the area at this, at that point, so.
That might be so.
It could be shoppers at the others.
Yeah, they could be coming from, um, yeah.
They'd still be familiar with the area. I mean, this isn't a situation where, you know, you've got, say, a Route 20 where someone may truly be going, you know, from east to west or west to east without any specific end destination within the confines of the city. But the signage issue is something that the code would, you know, we have to look at the sign code, and the administration would handle that.
Well, I'm, my only concern or interest about this is to avoid a problem down the road, not, I'm not trying to dictate the, the solution, but the concern is, you know, we know there's going to be other development further to the east, larger box, big box conditions.
Well, we don't know that.
I know we don't know that. And also, but the two that we have, you know, Sam's Club and, and.
Home Depot.
Home Depot, lots of people come from the region to go there, and on their way out, they may say, hey, I want to stop in Taco Bell, and they're, they're queued in line, and they want to make that left-hand turn, and there'll be signs, but I just know how people drive, and I'm just trying to give them a fighting chance to get in there. Otherwise, they won't be able to make, they'll have to drive by. Okay.
They'll know that for their next visit to the Home Depot.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to table the.
Well, let's do the preliminary or the final site plan first. We'll prove that, and then we'll table the architectural review. If that's okay with you.
That is fantastic.
Go right ahead and make the motion.
I want to make that motion.
Make the motion.
Motion to approve the, uh, the final site plan with, uh, which conditions, I mean, with striking number two, number two had to deal with architectural. So basically, it would be all of these conditions less number two, with the five conditions.
Well, plus the entrance and exit signs.
With the condition for the entrance and exit signs.
Very good. Now, is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti?
No.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mrs. Simperman?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Okay, now I entertain a motion to table the architectural review.
Motion to table the architectural review.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti?
Yes.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes, so you know what you have to do on the architectural components?
You want me to take these back and then resubmit all my architectural?
Yeah, because you may, you may change something in the meantime, so I think it would be good if you took them all back and represented them.
And just so I know, am I automatically tabled to the next meeting for that, or is that a resubmital that I have to make?
Your table.
No, you just need to bring back the building material samples.
And so I'm automatically on the, is that December meeting?
Twenty-first, yes.
December twenty-first. And do I need to submit those elevations in advance to you guys?
Yes, please.
And how soon in advance do we have to submit those?
Uh, the sooner the better.
Then ten days.
I don't mean to be vague on that, but tomorrow is the deadline for the next meeting, but I think you could have a little bit of leeway since we've tabled this tonight. So, you have questions, I suggest you comment, call Mr. Spence.
Okay, um, because I'm, I'm going to have to see, it, it won't be a day that Taco Bell can decide how quickly to turn around those colors.
Maybe it's the Jan, maybe it becomes the January meeting.
Ten days, you'll probably be okay.
Within ten days?
Yeah, I think you'll be fine. Just before the next packet goes out to the commission.
Because we all know it's just about selling tacos, right?
No, it's much more than that.
It is. Okay, so we're tabled on that. Thanks for, thanks for the comments. Mr. Spence, anything else?
Nope.
Good there?
Good.
A preliminary subdivision. See, miscellaneous review amendment to get it.
This is to Dylan's.
That's tabled.
Seven.
Did that applicant ever show up? No? Anybody here from Titan? Okay. Architecture review reimagining of commercial building, round one, at 78 Fifty-Minor Avenue.
Yes.
Here you go.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Here you go again.
My name is Matt Jerkowitz, Director of Development for Washington Prime Group, who is a parent company that owns Great Lakes Mall. We're back again today, and thank you, Mr. Spence. Uh, we're back today to discuss a couple of things, a couple of changes to the plan you previously had, had reviewed and approved, uh, the architectural reimagining, I believe, last month. The plan that you originally had reviewed, and we'd asked permission to move forward with, is rendered here at the top of this board. You'll remember the very stark white tray dress from round one with the red band. We're very happy to report that we were able to negotiate with them a softer color palette, which we feel is much more appropriate to the surrounding building.
So it's more of an earth tone color?
Indeed, sir.
We like earth tone.
Yeah, so, uh, for, for what it's worth, the remainder of the plan and the board materials that you see here are essentially as is. It's, um, it's really, if you're looking here, uh, the, the, the red band, um, scheme is slightly modified. The field color has been made a, a more gray color, and the infill to the entry element has been made to, to match the, the field as well, uh, on the backside, the, the band that runs across the top and around all sides of the building. You'll also note, uh, since we had the opportunity to talk about it last time, the entry element, uh, you'll, you'll see has been shown as, as, as a thin brick veneer, so we're no longer using an EPAS treatment. I know that was a concern from the committee, the planning commission, last time we were here, so we made that change. We've, we've also, actually, I'm not sure it's in this plan, but I'll pull it out here. It's in your packet, but we've also addressed some of the landscaping concerns that were originally voiced at the, at the meeting. So what you can see here is the plan showing the treatment for, uh, for the corner, uh, which would be south and west on the site. This, again, is the new entrance element for the round one entertainment venue. We're showing some plantings on the north side and the corner element around the restaurant. What we're hopeful will be able to do is, as we get closer to finalizing the plans with our intended tenant, we'll be able to come back and, and revisit the landscaping there at that site. But we were able to at least, um, respond to, to your preliminary.
And your name's already on the sign, so that's good, right?
You got it, you got it, so, coming soon. So, the colors, by the way, if, if, Mr. Spence, so that we're, I'll provide them, but, um, our architect actually is down with the flu, so she was not able to come with, uh, with color samples, but, uh, the colors we'll provide to you, you'll have them, and, and these are, you'll be able to see how they, they work together.
There's the board.
And there's the board, yep, exactly. Yep. You guys are able to see it, yep. All right. So these are the new colors for the, for the round one treatment. This is the same color as before, and this is the new field color, and in lieu of white. This, again, is the same color as before, but, uh, this color is now replacing, I'll put this in order. This color is now replacing what was the cotton white color from the preliminary, or the original submission.
Gotcha, okay, commission members, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Just so that I, you made a comment before about the getting, were you saying you were getting rid of the thin brick and going with whole brick?
Oh, sorry if I, if I misspoke. No, we're, we're going with the thin brick.
The thin brick, okay, I just want, is that what it says on the drawing? I just wanted to verify that.
Correct, we're doing away with the EPAS element that we initially.
Getting rid of the EPAS, but the, the brick is still thin brick, all right. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga, Mr. Valeri. Mr. Val, 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 Larry.
I feel as though I, I, something got skipped. The last time you were here, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't think we talked about a restaurant in this location. I, why am I thinking about, there was a conversation about leaving second floor access to a tower, and one day coming back and presenting something, and I feel we talked about that, now all of a sudden, I'm, I may have missed it, but I feel like this is the first time I.
You're right, there's several, there were several conversations going on, but what we're looking at doing when it comes to the, the second level, I think, Mr. Vargas, I think, had particular concern about the second level with our exterior elevations, uh, both on this page, as well as on this page, which is the north-facing Menor Avenue page. There was some concern that, you know, if you brand up here on the top side, you'll be in a position where, in the future, when you do in fact have a tenant for the second level of the space, you would be boxing yourselves in from doing something to be able to brand for that tenant. Last, last time through, um, one of the things we talked about is that, yes, we are going to carve out on the interior, and you're looking here, you're, we are carving out at this corner, the potential space for vertical transportation and a new tower element in the future. So we do preserve the opportunity for future second-level space, and I can assure you that we're actively working to market that space for anybody in the room who happens to have an interest, it is rated at an assembly rating, so, um, we are, we are moving forward with, with those efforts. At the same time, however, we're not obligated to round one to maintain this brand treatment all the way up to where it is showing, uh, today. So in the future, to the extent we want to pop in as many windows as we would like, let's say we were able to find someone that wanted a creative art, uh, you know, more creative type space for office, or a medical office user, or a medical user of any kind, or, uh, or a, an event venue that wanted to have, in, in fact, cuts on the second level of this space that would allow for indoor/outdoor experiences on the second level. All of those types of things would be accounted for, um, in a follow-up. We would come back to you in a follow-up, uh, hearing, hearing session submission in relation to that tenant's particular needs, and seek consent for those subsequent changes to the building. Today, we're, we're in a place where we're going to put this treatment on the building so that, we're, we're doing the best we can today to, to make the building look, look good. And then down the road, hopefully, we have an opportunity to come back and talk about second level.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition?
Second.
Jess?
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti?
Yes.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes, I think the, uh, the, the new colors, the earth tone, looks much better.
That looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, folks.
You, too.
Number eight, miscellaneous review of an expansion to an outside storage area at 9600 Menor Avenue by Lowe's. Go right ahead.
I'm Rick Runz, I'm the store manager at the Menor Lowe's at 9600 Menor Avenue. So I actually have two things on the table I'd like to get approval for. I guess we'll start with the first one. I have a current storage area now, which was approved before I was actually at the store, of about forty-three feet, coming out and a hundred and thirty-five feet wide, and requesting actually have another storage area to the left of that, to the fire hydrant, and then create another storage area there for the influx of product that they get in the spring. Because what I, what I receive, it overflows what we already have existing, the fencing and mulch and dirts and everything else that come in, there's no way it'll all fit there. I'm looking to expand that, build another wall, um, forty-three feet out, and it's about a hundred and ten feet long.
Okay. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, it's a masonry wall, and the administration supports the expansion of, of the area based on the amount of products that they get.
But then you don't have to handle the complaints, right?
Right. If it's screened and not visible from off-site views, then we're good.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant on this particular aspect of his plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman?
So I went out to your site today, and, um, where you are showing, are, are we just, I'm sorry, are we just voting on the extension, or are we also looking at the trailers?
We're just going on the extension at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry. But you do have some pallets where you have labeled A, your trailer's A, you have miscellaneous debris, um, in that location, and I'm not even sure why it's not behind the wall. It just seemed like there was, there were things there that needed to be behind the wall, and they weren't, so.
That steel, that steel that you're probably referring to, we're actually going to be shipping it out and getting that out of here, that was planned this week to get that done. If you're talking behind the trailers that are existing there already, there's some metals and things of that nature behind there, that's going to be removed.
Okay.
Is that what you were talking about?
I was talking about where the trailer, where you have the trailers listed as A on the drawing, which there's, there's nothing there right now.
What debris are you referring to? Because I know I have two trailers that have one pallet, one appliance, and then behind there, there's some miscellaneous metal and things like that which we're going to be shipping, referring to that? Or you're referring to also some pallets which have to go into the trailer?
I, I, I don't know. I, I was just seeing debris out in the parking lot in general.
That debris will be removed and taken to a steel.
Okay.
So what we're talking about here is just the expansion of the garden center, the expansion of the garden center at this point?
Storage for my, my spring, especially from March until July, I'm inundated with freight, so I'm asking to get approval to have a wall.
Whether you want it or not, you got, whether you want it or not, you get it, right?
I get it, I can't stop it, yep.
Questions? Okay, Mr. Sidoti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was out at the site Wednesday.
Okay.
So you have four mobile minis.
Correct.
Back there, now those will stay, correct?
That's what I'm also getting approval for, because I know right now I'm only approved for two, which are my appliance trailer and my, um, and my pallet trailer. The reason I'm asking for that is that with the closing of B&amp;B, HH Craig, and Sears, obviously that business went to other retailers, Lowe's, Home Depot, whoever. My inside of the store, um, I don't have room to store all those appliances. I'm getting close to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty appliances weekly, so I need a storage area for that, and that's what those containers are for. Those are all appliances for either customers existing or stuff coming in stock, so when they do come in, we can, we can give it to them, so I'm looking and requesting to have that.
You're, so you're seeking our approval for.
Correct.
For two additional mobile minis.
If I could do four with the influx of appliances I'm getting right now, especially from Black Friday and no sales, I know it says two on here, but four is really what I need.
So is it?
Or total of six?
Because inside the store, there's not enough room.
So is that a total of six trailers then, or is it two and two?
It would be, it'd be six total, there'd be two, uh, containers, then there'd be a trailer, four containers for appliances, and then you have your pallet and your appliance trailer.
I'm just wondering, I, I got a question I'm going to ask. Would it be not advisable to add on to the building to store this stuff? Is that a possibility? I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to, I know we have property maintenance issues and stuff like that, I'm not sure we want to get into trailers for storage, because one of your competitors down the street lines that drive aisle next to Bob Evans with all kinds of containers at certain times of the year, and it frankly doesn't look good.
Well, those containers, so far, it's like to drive in the back of the building, those containers are out of that drive area where people like to drive behind it, so that's, that's not an issue.
But they're, but they're still there, so, let's get back to the garden center, and let's get that part done. And so are there other questions on the garden center? If not, then let's approve the garden center expansion. I call it the garden center because that's what originally was set up as.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Mr. Sidoti?
That masonry wall that separates Embers from Lowe's, you know, it's like an L-shaped, and you've got all that stuff behind it.
Mm-hmm.
That's staying, correct?
The one that's there existing?
It's existing, yeah.
Yeah, it's staying there, yeah.
And you're, and you're going to store behind it like you're doing now?
Correct. Did you have that wall, you have a little aisle with the fire hydrant, and then we want to build another wall, which would be forty-three by a hundred and ten feet, to store the product that we, the influx we get there in the spring.
Anything else, Mr. Sidoti?
No, thank you.
Okay. So let's get, let's get the garden center expansion done. Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri?
Thank you. I feel that the last time that we approved, um, outdoor screening, I mean, you're just talking about building two walls and a, and a back of it, correct?
Yeah, it'd be a forty-three foot wall this way and then a hundred and ten this way.
Right, so we're not shielding the front of it at all, and when we talk about outdoor screening and shielding of things, we typically talk about all four sides, and, and all about all four sides, and all we're doing is basically building a corral to put these in, in essence, correct?
Correct. Because you guys don't want to see it from the parking lot, so the 43-foot wall this way would shield that.
Right. And I hate bringing this up, but I mean, we just had another applicant that we sent back, I feel, three times, because we wanted to shield it on all four sides, and now we're accepting just the two sides in the rear of it. And I'm struggling with that, just because it's not in harmony of everything else that we've approved. That's a big distance, I don't know if there's any easy way to put gates or anything on the front. I mean, what are you storing, mulch primarily, or?
Mulch. It soils, I got rock, I got block that comes in, I have fencing that comes in, I mean, it's a multitude of items.
Right. And so now, you're coming out further into the parking lot, so as you're looking straight on, you're going to be shielded, but as you're coming, what direction is that, going west? East? As you're going east, as you come up against the garden center, everything's just going to be out in the open. So I don't think we're really truly going to shield anything, all we're doing is building a corral.
You recommending to have all four walled in and then have a gate there to access it, or?
And that's the tough part. And the other side, I mean, it's trying to be realistic, and you're not going to be able to get tow motors, but I think you need to put some type of gates on the front of this, because we've been very diligent with other applicants to say that we need to shield it on all four sides. So somehow, putting some type of a gate system on the front, if it's a large roller system or something along those lines, but I think we need to have something along those lines.
So is that gate going to span like...
Logistically, that's not going to work. I mean, it sounds good. Logistically, that's not going to work. The visibility that you're going to have through there is blocked, especially for Menor Avenue, you don't want to see this, that's 400 feet back.
And that's where I'm struggling with this, though, but we...
I think you have to use some common sense.
I would disagree with that, because we've had other areas where it's not even visible from anything, and we've sent applicants back, and we've...
When you're driving tow motor, oh, I got a gate? Yeah, right.
But what would be the option, because I'm going to get the influx of product? It's not, it's going to happen every spring.
It's coming.
And if I don't have it, my sales will decline immensely, and I can't store it at other stores. Logistically, that just is not going to work out.
Do you have to have it on the side?
I don't know where else to put it.
So if we're going to talk common sense, then is there any other location in the rear of the building that you can utilize? You've got the parking stalls that are back there where you've got your storage units now, what about along the back of the building?
You're talking right now, that one wall is 43 feet out. If you're going to put something in the back of the building, you're going to be coming right into, it's just going to be a hazard for cars going around there. It needs to be on that side just for ease of traffic, because everybody uses that road to go to the backside. There's no way I could store product back there.
Mr. Chairman.
If we have concerns with containers back there, you're going to have concerns with product back there, like mulch and things of that nature.
You do have some product back there, though.
Mrs. Semperman.
You've got some blocks, you've got some...
Mr. Sedoti, Mrs. Semperman has the floor.
I'm sorry.
I'm kind of, I'm in agreement with Mr. Valeri, and I'm also in agreement with Mr. Snow's suggestion. How about increasing the size of the garden center portion of the building so that it can take the stock that you have coming in every spring?
Increasing that, how far would you allow me to put that out? Because I don't even know if that would hold the amount of material that I get in. You come into spring and see the pallets that I get in of mulch and dirt. Expanding that building, whatever, 40 feet, is not going to hold, with the racking that you're going to put up, it's not going to hold that much product. I'm still going to need product to be outside. There's no way around that.
Mr. Chairman. Semperman, anything else?
Go ahead.
Go right ahead, Mr. Varga.
I'm, I guess, the more I look at this, the more confused I get, so you're going to have to bear with me. These two storage Elko's, for any other purpose, are along the side there. And we have this driveway that goes between the storage areas and the building, and that's regular parking, it's striped for parking?
Correct.
Well, when there's cars parked there, how do you get your materials in and out?
Cars never park there. There is parking spots that actually go that other L, there's parking spots all the way down through there.
Right, and I see that, too. I see that you're going to get rid of those. That was a separate drive that was single-loaded. Well, I guess, I'm just trying to understand how this works. So we have a double-loaded corridor of parking between the storage and the building that really isn't parking, you're not going to use it for parking. You can't really use it for parking, because if people park there, you can't get your materials, right?
Correct.
They'd be in the way. What happens if, just bear with me for a second.
Okay.
What happens if you just get rid of that double line of parking and put all your, and wall that area off and put all your product there, and just have a driveway go around closer to the perimeter and then over?
That was my suggestion.
Is that what you were trying to get at?
So where exactly are you saying wall it in?
I'm not trying to, I know I'm just screwing with your whole mind here, so I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This parking really isn't functional any longer. And, but it's going to remain, and this is where your access is to these storage areas. What happens if you just brought a wall out and closed that off and you walked right into it? All of this was your storage in your driveway, you just want here to the back and then over.
You're saying extend it out all the way that way, wall it in and make all that storage?
Garden center, in a sense, out, those walls out, and put all that, it's actually more area than you probably need, but you see what I'm getting at?
Okay.
And then just run the driveway on the outside and then over, and it would all be kind of contained in the shape of the building, and you wouldn't have this outlying storage area. It's just a thought. I get off on these tangents sometime.
Okay.
But I guess what I was trying to question is the need for that parking, you know? All that parking is marked, but it's really just in the way. And you're telling me it's not even useful.
No.
So that space is available for storage, is what I was trying to get at.
I guess the ease, I mean, if we walled it all in, I look at that other side as the ease of getting to product and pulling it out when we get the trucks in it, just having that. Because I thought the initial issue was, is that you didn't want to see that product from the parking lot or from the road.
That's true.
So if we, just like we built that L over there, that was for that reason, so you couldn't see the product, and that was approved. So I'm looking at doing the same thing so you don't see the product. It'll be contained within that. And it'd be, it's ease of doing business, logistically, running a fork truck and getting product.
But there's nothing really to stop people from parking their cars back there, right?
No.
I just, I'm a little confused by how that actually all works, you know? I understand what you're saying, nobody ever parks there, but when they park there and you're trying to load materials past their car that's parked right in the middle, it seems to be a bit of a conflict. I'm just trying to, I'm just going to clean up more of that.
And at this point, I mean, since I've been at this store, we have stored product there, because that's where we've had a store.
And you haven't had a problem.
We haven't had problems, so...
Mr. Spence, anything else?
Just get rid of the striping, no one parks back there.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what I was getting at, is that you have all this space that's all parked, there's a striped island that runs back there, and...
Only thing, semis are back there usually in the springtime.
Which means that you have a conflict between loading and unloading zone and the parking that's at least identified.
Right, so just get rid of the striping on the side.
Get rid of all the car striping, so that, and put up, no parking, you know? And then you can do what you want, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Semperman, anything else? Mr. Sedoti, you wanted to comment?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You all set?
Again, I think, I agree with Mr. Valeri, and I agree with you. If this is such a big issue, and, you know, we're taking tow motors back and forth between the two structures, why not just make the structure bigger, and then you don't have to move back and forth all the time?
Is that something you can do?
I would have to get with my boss and take a look at that and get with our folks at corporate.
Okay.
Because you're basically talking about extending that part of the building out and containing everything within there.
I mean, we're certainly cognizant of your concerns of what you have to do as the store manager, getting all this product in and having to sell it and move it around, but by the same token, we need to be concerned about aesthetics and that type of thing, so...
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I thought, when the store was originally designed, that's why we had a screened-in area for their product.
Right.
And what you're telling us is that area's not big enough for you to store your product in.
It's not. I mean, because we're not allowed, like, most stores have a front with plants. We don't, so everything we get is all stored inside.
Well, and...
I mean, that's the rules that matter, and that's fine.
Right, right.
But the plants that we get in, I'm jam-packed inside, and all my fencing's in there and all that other kind of stuff, so there is not enough room to contain everything. And in my back wall for pallets, I can probably hold, I got my stock below, three levels up, so what, maybe 20 skids, 25 skids up there? And I'm, in spring, it's just enormous. It's a build, for the sale, for the season.
So what's the pleasure of the commission?
I would like you to, I would like you to see if we could expand the building. That's what I would like. I mean, it sounds like that's what you need.
And you need the concurrence of your people.
I have to get with corporate and my boss and discuss it.
So why don't we table that?
Okay.
Entertain a motion to table that, and then we'll get on to the trailers in a second.
Okay. Motion to table the expansion of the...
Garden center.
Garden center area.
Pallet storage.
Pallet storage area.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess?
Ms. Moritz.
No, only because I'm concerned that if we are looking at expanding the building, that's going to take longer than this March timeline where all the product's coming in, and it's not going to solve the problem.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, so that's tabled. Now, trailers, we want to talk about.
Correct.
Commissioners, questions on the trailers?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Semperman.
So when I was out there today, first of all, you had, I don't know what Mr. Sedoti was referring them to, but I'm going to call them onsite trailers.
Correct. Storage pods.
Storage pods, whatever you want to call them. They were all, there were four of them together.
Yep.
Where you have B on the site plan. And so A and B were all together. And then you had two semis, trailers, without any...
That is my pallet trailer and my recycled appliance trailer, those two semi-trailers.
And I thought that's what we had approved.
You did approve that. I wasn't aware that I had to get approval for the other containers, and that's when Eric came out and made that aware, and that's why I'm here now. To get approval for that, because of the additional stock that I'm getting, I don't have room inside of my receiving center to hold it.
Okay. So that's where we come up with six?
Correct.
So in 2009, you approved two trailers, is that correct?
Correct.
And now you're here for four more trailers, basically is what you're here for, four more storage containers. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mrs. Semperman.
And then at the far west end of the building, you've got lumber out in the fire lane, in the proposed heavy-duty concrete area, a lot stored outside. So what's going on with that stuff?
In season, I have, I have product stored outside. Right now, I have some racking being switched out, has to be changed out, so most of that's coming in, but in the, in the, in the spring and summer, I have lumber outside because I don't have room to store it all inside. It's overstock.
Okay. Thank you.
So it seems to me that maybe the building at this point, for all the competition that's gone out of business, is maybe a little too small, should be a little bit bigger.
Definitely for the appliances.
Okay.
Definitely.
So I think we need to look, my personal opinion is, I think we need to look at expanding the size of the building, as opposed to having all these trailers and that type of thing. I'm not enamored with seeing trailers, but that's just me. I'm sure, I share that with several other commission members, but any comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I guess just to follow up on that, I, too, would like to see the addition, but in the meantime, with the need for these trailers, if we put a temporary stipulation or something like that, at least, things would be stored inside a pod instead of sort of overflow, as they call it. So I don't really have a problem with that, if we maybe even look at some sort of temporary...
You want to do the trailers with some sort of timeframe on them?
Yeah, and then he could still explore maybe a building addition, and then come back before us with that, but I think that might sort of solve the problem in the interim.
If, in fact, you adhere to the, adhere to the time constraints.
What are the time constraints?
Well, that's what we got, that's what we got to determine here, I think.
That's something I honestly would have to get with corporate on, it's not a decision they're going to make within a week, and there's a lot of things got to go into that. We're looking at extending the building, and how are we going to do that? And how far can we go back? And that's a, that's a pretty big undertaking.
Sure it is.
To do that.
But as you pointed out, you mean, you've, you've lost competition, they've gone out of business, and now you're entertaining the value of that, so I think at some point, you're going to be under, to quote an old law director here, maybe it's too small in this day and age. No.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Semperman.
The two semi-trailers.
Yep.
You know, on the plan here, you know, if they were located where you have your As, that would be all fine and dandy, but where you have them, one of the semis is out in the middle of the drive aisle.
Our vendor put it there, and we're going to have him put it back. He would not put it next to the one trailer. So when they come pick that up, they're going to have to put it closer. He just dropped it there and drove off, and I don't have a way to move that trailer again. I don't have a semi-truck.
Well, but none of the trailers are where you have A, correct? I mean, the other one is up against, I agree with you, yeah, it is up against the fence, but they're not over by the storage area. They're kind of in the middle of the, I don't know, they're kind of no man's, I guess I would like to see them all consolidated together somewhere, wherever that may be. And I agree with Mr. Perkovic, if we, you know, I guess I'd rather see temporary storage in a trailer than out in the middle of the parking lot without any storage.
So is that a motion?
No, because I'm not sure what kind of a timeframe on it.
Well, we'll entertain a motion with some sort of time constraints. In the meantime, that gives you a little opportunity to talk to your people about what can we do building-wise.
Okay.
Okay? So does six months work?
We can go with that, yep.
Mr. Valeri, you want to make a motion?
Motion to approve with four additional temporary storage containers with a six-month time period on them. After six months, you'll either need to come back and ask for reapproval, or hopefully by that time, it gives you enough opportunity to work with your corporate about long-term...
Okay.
And what we want to be sure is that with the additional trailers or storage pods, that nothing gets stored outside, no lumber, no appliances, no landscaping materials, none of that. It's all going to be confined in those six pods, right?
So the lumber you want in pot, so the lumber in the back of the building you want?
Nothing should be stored outside.
Okay.
I mean, we're not trying to be difficult, but...
I can't put lumber in a trailer. There's no way to do that, they're filled with appliances. What I can look at doing is moving all the lumber over to the other, other wall, but again, it's spring.
Mr. Chairman?
Just looking at a lot of logistic problems here if we, you know...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Varga?
I don't want to drag this out too much, I know he's starting to, you know, get frustrated.
Well, you know, we're trying to run a business, and it's...
Let me ask you a question, because this lumber is a completely different, separate subject.
Correct.
And that's over on the west end of the building, in the back. On this plan that you have here, it shows it there, there's an area called land banked area. Now, is that paved currently, or that's just future?
That is all grass back there. The pavement is all through, there's a curb right there going all the way down.
As you think, as you think about, or go to corporate and determine whether they can do something more permanent to solve all your problems, could, could there be some Could, could there be some kind of storage, permanent storage?
That's all elevated, so that definitely have to be graded down. It's all...
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to...
No, no, I'm just...
I'm just looking for more permanent solutions rather than a lot of temporary solutions. That if you can kind of get your arms around all these loose ends down the road, it would be easier for us to approve it than to have pieces and parts. Some areas are stacked outside, some places it's not. Some places it's enclosed, some places it's not. Sometimes it's in a trailer, sometimes it's not. If you could kind of address all this in six, within the six-months period, that would be, I would include all the storage of all materials outside to be resolved in six months, including the lumber or building materials, you know, whatever you got there.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes?
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
No.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Preliminary site plan of a warehouse building at 8240 Tyler. Who's that applicant here? Yes, he is. Now, this is a preliminary site plan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go right ahead. Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name is Matthew Smith. I'm with Anchor Construction, representing Fastenal Company. Civil engineer, project manager for this project. Do you like a quick summary of the project?
Sure.
This is a proposed 7,300 square foot wholesale and warehouse facility for Fastenal Company with associated parking and truck dock facility.
And that's the name of that tune, right?
Yep.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration? Mr. Spence, any comments you'd like to make?
One, the parking's at a 30-foot setback, so we'll have to have landscaping and mounding in front of it if the commission approves it. I would also comment on the elevations. This is a preliminary, but it's, it's part of final. There's, it doesn't meet the design guidelines as far as you've got metal on three sides. And the design guidelines recommends a 50/50 of masonry to...
Minimum of 50/50.
Right.
Right?
Right.
You know what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. I can explain a little bit if, yeah, I mean...
Go ahead.
We had originally, I'm just going to be honest with you, when we had originally submitted the elevation with our preliminary site plan, we did not have a complete understanding of the requirements as far as the architectural facade is concerned. I have brought with me sets of a couple of options for architectural facades. What we had submitted is what is Fastenal's typical elevation that they do all across the country. They have thousands of branches throughout the U.S., and we haven't done thousands. But, we've done quite a few for them, and this, and the elevation that we submitted is their typical layout. Understanding mentor's requirements, however, we have come up with a second option that if you'd have me, I'd like to bring before you as perhaps a compromise that does include masonry on at least two sides.
Okay.
We would like to request, can I go ahead and put it up there?
Sure, sure.
And then, I have several copies. If each of you would like a paper copy, that's, that's up to you. What this is, is what we had originally submitted. So, the colors on the front and the materials on the front is Fastenal's typical layout for their front elevation. Now, like I said, understanding further mentor's requirements as far as that, we have, we have proposed this elevation instead, which replaces, excuse me, sorry about that, which replaces the metal wall panel that we were proposing on the front for the brown with, with a split-face block instead. It also replaces the gray V-rib panel with a panel that's called... Excuse me for a second. With a, with a flat, non-ribbed panel called Impresta Cloud from, from VP Buildings, which is our steel provider. And then, it's maintaining the same blue color up top there as the accent color. And then, on the east wall, which is a non-expandable wall, which is this one right here, we do have the 50% block on that wall as well. We would like to request that both the south wall and the west wall remain metal wall panel as they are proposed as future expandable walls.
Legitimately expansion walls?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because we, we've run into that in the past where expansion walls never get expanded.
Yes, sir. We, I have an example for you. We just built a building for Fastenal in, in Missouri. I know it's not Ohio, but in Missouri. And not, not more than a few months after that, our client came back to us asking for a building expansion.
I just want to make, ask that question.
Yep. There is always possibility of expansion, and they have plans to allow that for...
And it's a real possibility?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Mr. Spence, any comments? I know you've just seen it.
Well, it still doesn't meet our design guidelines.
Again, this is a preliminary. It's not a final, so we have some time between now and the final to make those adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Right? Mr. Varga?
Is it possible, on the two sides where you have the metal and where you would have expansion in the future, could you go with two-part metal panels so that the lower part is the same color as the masonry? So that you could still get the stripe effect?
Yes, I believe we would be able to do that.
And in the future, if you move that wall out, you could replace that metal panel with masonry in the future?
Yes, we did that, we have done that before. We did that at our location in Mentor, or not Mentor, excuse me, Warren, Ohio.
Okay. So, you've done something like that?
Yeah.
So, I would suggest you, you look at taking that approach when you come back. And the other thought I have here is that you have, on the side, you do have the masonry. You have the, the masonry that, which matches the height in the front. Then, you have another stripe, and then, another band of masonry on the side. But it doesn't really resolve itself, you know, where that masonry comes around. Could that masonry include the windows, maybe? Or, you know, somehow that, you have to resolve that. And we can look at that in the future.
The stripe, the stripe comes here to the front, and then, and then it just kind of disappears, you know? I guess that's the window height, but of the windows there?
Yeah, understood.
I would just look to see if it maybe is more continuous at the front than the sides.
But if you could do that with two metal panels, different colors, it would look, in the interim, it would look like the design was consistent all the way around. And it would give you a leg up when you did the addition.
So, you're suggesting that...
Something, just resolve it, because right now, it just goes to the edge and it doesn't...
And remember, the, the 50% balance is a minimum of 50%. It could be more if the architectural treatment allows for more.
So, so the thought might be that just continue that band like you have it on the side and continue it on the front and encapsulate the windows in that, that stripe. And that would get much closer to the 50%. I'm not, I'm not sure you're still there, but you understand the comment.
It's a minimum of 50%.
Yeah.
We have to keep driving that home, because everybody says, "Well, that's the minimum." Well, it's the minimum. It's not, you could, doesn't mean you can't go higher.
Understood, understood, sir, yeah. So, we, we will certainly, I guess, I guess I, I understand this is just a preliminary, and we, like you said, we have more time to, to get through the architectural. I suppose, I'd like to get more of a concrete understanding of, of what would, what would be acceptable to the commission. If...
50%.
Minimum of 50.
On the entire building? Minimum of 50%.
I, I think Mr. Varga has some reasonable solutions to the expansion walls, so...
Yep. Great.
That would be, those strips would be future masonry.
Right.
But it would look like the building was consistent. And you might, and maybe the way you get that too is to do that all the way around, all four sides.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Zimmerman?
I'm going to change the subject a little bit. Why a 30-foot setback in the front? Why, why are you going to park in a 30-foot setback rather than 50, which is required? I'm looking at the properties to either side of you, and they both have a 50-foot setback. So, your parking is going to be up front. I'm not sure where the building is going to be in relationship to the buildings next door, but, or the one building next door. So, I...
I can give you a quick idea, yeah. This is the, is that, I believe, next door to us? That's the face of their building.
Okay.
The face of the building to our west is like way...
Right, 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 right.
Mr. Spence, is this the old animal hospital site that never got built?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the reason we've made use of the 30-foot limited parking setback here is because this is a relatively small site, and we'd like to allow for both the stormwater drainage and the future building expansion to the rear. So, we've, we've pushed our building back just about as far as it will go. And so, we do not have room to have the double row of parking without, without making use of 30-foot limited parking setback.
I'm just looking at the property to your east, and they have double rows. And that's, that's where I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah. I, I believe their property goes further south than ours does. Property, our property right here, and I believe theirs goes... For, I'd have to relook at their aerial. But it's a, it's a spatial...
Does Zimmerman anything else since you...
I don't know. I'm beginning, I'm thinking of you, and that maybe the site's too small for the building. I, I don't know.
A lot going around.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
We're happy to, to put the mounding and the landscaping in front of the parking lot.
Let me have, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Varga.
You have the, some of the, this detention basin in the rear. And I'm trying to get my bearings here in terms of north. Oh, yeah. To the east, you have a large strip of land, either parking or pavement. Could you divert the, the retention basin in the rear to the side and be able to shift everything down?
That blank space on the east edge of our property is a 50-foot easement that belongs to, I believe, our neighbor to the south, or that benefits our neighbor to the south.
Oh, you mean access?
Yeah. In the easement, there is allowance for future access if they would so desire. So, that has prevented us in our plan from putting any sort of parking or stormwater basin, et cetera, there. Also, that is an existing ditch, which we are doing our best not to impact.
Okay. Well, that's an answer. That's, that answers that question.
Okay, anything else? We entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with three conditions. I'll second.
Yes?
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
No.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Reformal rezoning of 19.0917 acres from our four, single-family to RVG. As he takes a deep breath and steps to the microphone.
Oh, yeah. First of all, I want to thank Chairman Snow, Vice Chairman Valeri, and the rest of the commission for their time this evening. I'd like to ask if it's possible if we could play that video that we provided to counsel on your system.
I've looked at it, yes.
Is it okay?
Yep, it's good.
So, she's going to set it up. I'll talk a little bit first.
Okay.
I'm George Davis, President of Probuilt Homes. My personal address is 7962 Butler Hill Drive in Concord. Probuilt is a Mennor company. Our offices are on Tyler Boulevard. We've been in business for 15 years. I'm working with the property owner Fred Zook, who is nearing retirement age. And this is part of his estate planning, is to develop the property. So, we're here today to ask to informally start the process of task to rezone the property from the existing residential district to the residential Village Green district.
Okay.
I'm excited about this project. So many times today, you know, the projects of this size tend to go to a national builder, and you end up with cookie-cutter houses, one after another, usually a little bit lower quality. And in this case, we would be developing and building all the homes in there. And we would be custom-building high-quality homes that I think would truly benefit the city of Mennor. It would provide a lot of options. Provide, provide move-up housing for a lot of existing residents of Mennor. And also, due to the fact that we're going to build branches, first-floor masters, as well as colonials, it would provide a really good option for residents of Mennor as they're aging to get into single-floor living in a quality-built home. And, oh. Get a little problem.
Did you share the password?
She knows my password. I don't know why she couldn't do it. Anyways, I, also, a little bit about the design. I truly feel this is, is in the spirit of Village Green. We enlisted Rick Harrison, a nationally-known land planner that you guys are aware of through the Lake Shore Highlands Project. We retained him to help us with this design. So, I think, I know you guys have looked at it, and I think as you see the video, hopefully, you would agree that this would be a really attractive community, a pedestrian-centric community, walking paths, some real thought put into recreation areas and, you know, areas for people to truly enjoy their environment, as well as preserving a lot of the natural spaces that were in this property. So, if it's okay with your permission, we'd like to play that video.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Hopefully, it works, sir. Thank you for the time to enlighten you that. I appreciate your time.
Let me, let me ask you one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's R4 zoning. What precludes it from being developed as R4 zoning?
Well, in today's marketplace...
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah. In today's marketplace, the trend is towards smaller lot sizes. I would cite Bellejo Lane off of Garfield. That road was put in, what, 12 years ago? And I think still about 35% of the lots are available. The market for half-acre lots is just not as strong in the city of Mennor. You know, most of the people would prefer to have a smaller lot size and then have a true sense of community, where like, you know, in this community, you know, for example, we, we retained that pond at the south, southeast corner, which is the highest point of the lot, so it does not pertain to stormwater at all. You know, retaining that pond, putting a gazebo there, some benches, having a walking path. That's what people want to create community.
I just wanted to ask the question, because, you know, that's a substantial change. So, we need to ask the question of why can't it be developed as the R4? And your answer was a good answer, so...
Okay. Good, good. Glad for that. So, just a few more comments, and then I'll open it up for you guys for questions. The real importance of that design is, you know, the curved roads rather than the typical, more intersecting roads allows us to stagger the house setbacks. So, you're, you're not just looking at the side of every house all in a row. You're actually seeing some perspective and some depth, which really adds to the, the look of the neighborhood. Another interesting fact that would have some, some benefits to Mennor over the long haul is when we laid this piece out, when, when Mr. Novak, my local engineer, when he laid it out in the conventional fashion, we had 242 lineal, 2,042 lineal feet of road. With this design, the road is 1,800... With this design, the road is 1,813 lineal feet. So there's actually an 11.2% savings in road length, which, you know, long-term maintenance of a public street with, for the city, you know, I think is a good, you know, it's a good idea. You know, we're trying to be conscientious. Some of that is helped by the ability to cluster the housing, but...
How long is your longest cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac, it's like 273 feet or something. You know, since you brought up the cul-de-sac, you know, there was the property owner Fred Zook, he really preferred to not connect to Remington. He wanted to have a cul-de-sac there. But obviously that, you know, in speaking with staff, you know, it's Mennor's...
Interconnects, sir.
...that that needs to be connected. So we are connecting to Remington. So the only cul-de-sac is the road that we proposed to call Bristle Cone, which I believe is 273 feet.
So we're good there?
Yep.
Okay.
Less than 600.
Yeah, it's definitely less than 600.
Okay. Commission members, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
In general, you know, it's an interesting approach, similar to other things we've seen that I think has a certain sensitivity to it. There's a couple of questions or a couple of observations I've made. With the way Chillicothe has that bend right at that point where it goes from an angle to, I guess, due north. I'd like to see somehow incorporate in the design some way to shield the back of those houses from either the activity on the road and also the headlights that otherwise those buildings, those houses will be, you know, have headlights on the back of their houses in their backyards on the building. So whether it's landscaping, a berm, something like that, I'd like to see a little more shielding there. And the other question is, what is this tank configuration? What is this thing that kind of just barely is shown on the plan?
Yeah, the property has an existing gas well on it.
I don't see the tanks like that on the existing, in the existing plan.
On the...
You have the Google map or whatever. I don't see those tanks here.
Oh, you mean in our two-dimensional rendering?
Yes.
Yeah, they're there. They're right beyond the mailbox area. You can see it is...
No, no, I see it, I see them. I don't see them here on the existing Google.
I think it's because they're green in color and I think they're lost in the Google map. But they are most definitely there and they've been there for a long time.
And you've got to leave those there?
It's an existing gas lease. So, yeah, the gas is slowing down and eventually, you know, they will want to cap that, leave those, but it has not reached that point yet.
All right, I just, we have these wells all over the place. I mean, nuts. I would like to see that significantly shielded, landscaped, buffered, not to be, not to see. And the city to review the distances to the residential units relative to those tanks. I don't know what the requirement is, but certainly we want to have full safety area around those. It can't be, you can't drop them down, push them in the soil a little more, make them go away?
I wish, yeah. No. That would be nice.
She's laughing.
We do intend to screen them like we showed on the video. We showed a vinyl fencing, which would be in the spirit of the vinyl fence that, you know, we intend to run along Chillicothe and to demarcate the common area.
It looked like a big honking thing in the middle of your plan.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see it softened more with landscaping, trees, berms, whatever, because that's not, that's not in the spirit of your design to have that thing in the middle there. I'm sure you've thought about ways of making it go away. Is there the opportunity or the possibility that in the future it will go away?
It will. I'm in receipt of the gas leases. They have to go below a certain threshold in CFM and they're not there. But it's been slowly tapering off, so a few years from now that probably will reach that point.
So is part of the guarantee of, or condition of the design is that when it reaches that level of non-productivity, that they will be removed?
Can you speak to that? Do you remember the exact terms of the gas lease? I believe that's what it stated in there.
So that that does in fact become a green space like it suggested?
I was going to put that in our, you know, we could put that as additional deed restriction as well.
I mean, I...
It's an existing condition, unfortunately. You know, we're going to comply with all the OBNR regulations, but...
All right, well, that's... The other thing is that there is, in the two, with the one cul-de-sac and then you have a kind of a, an island at the end of the other driveway. Are you still intending to do that with the connection, still have that island in the pavement area, that darker green?
Correct.
What does that darker green signify? Is there going to be some public facility or amenity or something? What does that color designate as far as the design goes?
We designated it as a different color because it's not in our 15 and some odd percent green space. It's a separate line on our green space calculation. Because, you know, we didn't really feel that was fair. Before I moved to Concord, I lived on Sweet Hollow Drive and it has the typical cul-de-sac, the giant concrete.
Yeah, right.
Right? So here's what sucked about living on that cul-de-sac. The snowplows piled the snow 10 feet tall in front of everybody's house, right? So like, all of us on the cul-de-sac, we had this 10-foot pile of snow in the winter, right? And it lasted pretty much all winter because it was so high. The nice thing about having these open cul-de-sacs, and we would intend to leave it more grass so that when we do, when we get the snowpack, the city could plow the snow into the green space, the island, rather than plowing it into everybody's tree lawn. So that was the intent of that. If you'd prefer, I could go back to the regular concrete cul-de-sacs.
No, I don't want the cul-de-sac. I'm just thinking though that that's a nice location for some kind of amenity besides just grass.
Oh, I could do that, too. It would have to stay in the middle because the thought process was to leave enough space, you know, so that they could plow snow into it.
And that, you have this, you have a dedicated open space. I think there's a, I'm looking at the plan, I'm trying to read it. I think you have some kind of amenity down by the lowered lake, some kind of gazebo or something.
Yes, we have a gazebo. We're calling that, that's really more of a reflection pond, right? So we have gazebos and benches there so people could enjoy it.
I mean, if you have a couple of those, not just in one location, but around so that the kind of people who are moving here, they're getting, you know, they want to walk around, but they don't want to hike. So you might have a number of these amenities centers around the subdivision. I think it's to everyone's benefit to have that.
Yeah, we could do that along the walking path, you know, the common rail.
Correct.
I agree, that's a great idea.
It would be associated with the walking path and the public space.
Great idea.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri.
I think the project looks nice. Two items, so you're exceeding the lot count right now. You're at 49, so we're going to need to get that down. The other thing is, is I really encourage and like to see the common space increase. You're hovering right at that minimum threshold. And once you start looking at the gas wells that's in that common space, I mean, you're really going to cannibalize that. What are your thoughts on being able to increase the green space and any idea what lots and how you're going to reconfigure?
Yep, so we got to remove two lots. So obviously, the thing to do there is to make those green space. So we're going to be dramatically above the minimum once we remove those two lots. That was just an error in the calculation and I apologize for that. So, you know, I'd have to sit down with Rick again, the land planner, but the goal would be to create more green space with those two missing lots. So, you know, I think we'll get that pretty good.
I'll still, Mr. Snow's comment, the minimum's 15. If you can give us more, we'd be fantastic.
Yeah, and we will be because we're, two lots too heavy.
Right, once those come out. I always ask the question, do you need to maximize those number of lots? I mean, 47 is the maximum. You know, do you need all 47? Can you get away with 45 or 43 and...
We really need 60. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, with the requirements of the seller and then also with market pressures, it would be really difficult to make this project work without the full 47 lots.
Otherwise, I think it looks nice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman.
Who owns the gas wells?
They feed into the Dominion line that's at the street.
Right.
Is Dominion the owner of the well or is it...
Well, okay, let me rephrase that. Is Mr. Zook getting any royalties from this?
Yes, he is. Correct.
Okay, so the association would not be, he would still receive royalties after this project was built?
No, those royalties would then go to the association.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, I think the jury's kind of out on this as far as, well, maybe not with the Commission, but it is with me. And I know Mr. Perkovic and I were discussing that the lot, the path behind all the houses, I'm just not sure that people want you walking behind their house. Is that anything that you've looked into or...
Well, to be honest with you, no, because we thought that was a, if you looked at the video, you know, the plan was there, we were going to have a white, you know, white split-rail fence to define the common area. And, you know, these lots are still fairly large, so people still have a large backyard. But then, I guess honestly, no. I thought it would be great. You know, it provides, you know, people can walk through the neighborhood and, you know, in addition to the sidewalks, you have this nice walking path. So to be honest with you, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Spence, any comments from the Administration?
Nope.
Comments from the Commissioners? Entertained a motion. Oh, we don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion.
If you want to do the motion tonight, I'd love you to.
Okay, so we just move on to the next, you'll come back at some point.
Yeah, we will be coming back in December.
Okay.
Thank you.
Final site plan and architecture review of an office building at 7207 Hopkins.
Evening. We've made some changes that were requested since the last meeting. Obviously, when we first came to you originally, the access was going to come out to CBS. That's all been removed. We now have a hammerhead to meet the fire truck turnaround. Changes have been made. The fire department connection has been moved out away from the building. We've added three additional handicap parking spaces and this was due to the fact that the facility is an ambulatory facility. We moved the sidewalk away from the building for some additional landscape planning as well. Few minor adjustments for water and sewer services. Compressors are still located on the south side of the building, but we did move the electrical and the generator around to the south side. Any questions on the site plan or would you like me to go to the material board? Okay. So last time, the...
Let me interrupt you real quick. I need you to identify yourself.
Dean Kendrick, we're professional engineering consultants. Give me an address.
Sure.
4150 South 100th East Avenue, Suite 401, Tulsa, Oklahoma. The existing building is currently a lap siding with a composite asphalt roof. So the new materials are going to be, it's going to be a standard seam metal roof. It's a matte black finish with a composite hardwood siding and a wainscoting of manufactured stone. They're both going to look the same. Existing building's blue and this is going to be off-white.
Mr. Spence, any comments?
Nope.
Go ahead. Commissioners, comments for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri.
I think the buildings look extremely nice. Thank you.
And here are the material, the material board. This would be the paneling, standing seam roof, the different colors of the trim and the eaves and the stone veneer.
What kind of timetable are you on?
Spring.
Spring?
Yes, sir.
For the benefit of some of the Commission members, what we wanted to do years ago was, since this butts the residential areas, kind of move from a commercial-type-looking building to more of a residential-type-looking building. And I think this accomplishes that very nicely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
I agree with the comments. I think the building designs are great. I have only some sensitivity to all that equipment that's on the south side, compressors, emergency generator. And you're putting a fence around it?
Yes, sir. We're putting a fence. So the owner was adamant about not moving the compressors because his surgery suites are on that side of the building?
I'm not concerned about moving them, but I was thinking, is, do we have an issue with sound relative to the residential property that's right next door? And I'll just tell you where I'm going and just, is it possible that instead of having a fence, a vinyl fence that's not going to knock any sound down, at that lower elevation that you might use some of that stone, maybe to build a wall, enclosure around those or something to knock the sound down?
We have two fences. We have the fence on the property line and then we have the fence around that. Typically on sound abatement, you're going to get, you're going to get sound going up. Yes, you're going to have some cracks in there. The vinyl is going to...
Can you put a little landscaping around it? Can you put a little landscaping around it?
That's landscaping.
Could you put evergreens between the compressors and the fence? That would help to buffer that.
One of the staff comments was to add some additional evergreens so that can be addressed with that.
Yeah, I was just concerned about that, those equipment and that only a fence around it and...
Most of the newer compressors, the high-efficiency compressors aren't nearly as loud.
I understand.
They're probably 50, 60 decibels.
Well, if we can get some landscaping in there, I think that meets my level of concern.
And that was one of the comments, so we're definitely going to add that.
Okay, I didn't see that. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman.
Just to clarify, the fence that you're going to put in is going to be a six-foot white vinyl or an eight-foot white vinyl along the south property line?
Six-foot.
And is that what the resident wanted, if I remember right?
That's what's currently there.
That's what's currently there?
Yes.
I think the resident next to the, that's further up, wanted the six-foot. She didn't want the eight, so they put a six in.
Okay.
So I'd just stay consistent and go with the six.
Anything else? Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions. Second. Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Do you leave the building material samples for Mr. Spence?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Rick, any comments on the director's report?
Nope.
Okay, entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.